Okay, I I called for Wednesday, we're twenty twenty one, we have a council, um, I have a time, I think they'll give it up a couple of comments. Maybe I just have um, a couple of comments and one pertains to the meeting last week and there was contradiction that I found a little confusing. Um, if I heard correctly, the D C E D guy said that the size of a police force and number of patrols did not correlate to higher or lower crime rates. And then later on in the meeting, the chief asked residents not to post info on um, on the lower weeknight patrols on um, social media because criminals read social media. So there seems to be, to me, just the opposite of what the D C E D guys said. Um, the other comment is that um, last month, there was talk about the possibility of purchasing a parking lot that runs perpendicular to York and Johnson. Um, and I, you know, I was just kind of concerned about that because um, I, I don't know that we have proof that more parking is needed, especially down there. Um, I, I don't know if he's done surveys or anything like that, but I know I've been out there uh, for a couple of weeks, close today, and that lot at best is half full. Um, so it seems to be workers maybe, or maybe the nail salon customers, I, I don't know. Um, and then there was talk about needing parking for the new apartments on West Avenue. And I, I wasn't aware that we provided parking for apartments, um, but it seems like something we should not be doing. Um, and there was talk about potential restaurants, but right now, you know, is it, if we build it, they will come? Or if they come, we will build it? That's kind of my, my issue. And if you are building them, buying the parking lot for the restaurants, the restaurants don't, or people don't have to pay parking after six o'clock. So you're basically spending money, uh, paying upkeep and kiosks and everything else. And you're not going to get any restaurant patron money out of that.
Uh, thirty seconds.
But, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Oh, I, no, I'll get to that right after the public comment. Yeah, right after the public comment. I got you. Um, is there any other public comment? And Manager Locke, are you aware of any public comment by way of social media or by email? Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to, um, if we could, today is the transgender day of remembrance. Um, and I would like to have a moment of silence for that before we proceed. Thank you. Um, before I move on to reports, I did want to, um, we have a presentation tonight, um, which will be done by Kelly Hudson and that has to do with the J. K. Brown School District and the, uh, the what?
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Kelly Hudson. Uh, tonight I'm representing the Legacy Park Community Board. And that is functioning underneath a steering committee put together through the school board. Um, and that is comprised of stakeholders that represent, uh, the Borough Council as well as the school board. Um, members who helped to collect any prior pool playground, um, if anyone's familiar, but that was put together by a army of borough residents. Um, that was quite the push. It was almost a barn raising, if you will. Um, but unfortunately, that effort has hit its lifetime limit and that structure is not going to be viable much longer. Um, we had Finoni come out and look at it. We had my brother-in-law, Bob Hudson, come out and give it a once-over. He's a structural engineer source, and so they've been making repairs to keep it viable for the children in the short term. But long term, you know, that we need to invest other avenues. So we put this task force together. Um, Karen is also on this with me. We have pro bono architects and project engineers who do this for their day job, and they are creating their time and volunteering to really make this something special. So when we were notified, parents in the, as parents of students in the district, that the playground was going to be closed for a short period of time while they were looking into this and making the repairs, I emailed the school district and I said, why don't we look at this as an opportunity for both for the community? Instead of just chopping down one play structure or replacing it with, you know, the cut and paste plastic play structures, let's look at this as an opportunity to grow the community at large. We have a lot of green space back there that's kind of been put in place, you know, chopped in place for over the decades. You know, we've added a little bit here and there when we could. But if we have the opportunity and knowing that one thing needs a lot of attention and everything else is a little bit neglected, not because we don't love it, but because, you know, funds are hard to come by in a unique little town like ours. So if we take this time and we know we need to fundraise, but let's do it with a lot of oomph behind it, and let's look at it as the opportunity to grow a community park. So not only would we be benefiting the school and all of the elementary students, um, we know that Jacobtown is uniquely tight. We have limited funds, but we also have limited square footage. So if we can treat the elementary school back half, so basically from where the teachers enter, on the back half of Highland where the link closes off, all the way through Florence up and turning on West, there's a lot of green space back there that the kids spend all of their time at. So if we can treat it as a community park where both grandparents bring their kids, adults bring their students after school, I know a lot of people like to just come and use that space for walking. It's a cut-through. It's, it's a frequented area in our country, or borough, whatever. Um, so our thought was if we can put funds for it and both the borough and the schools work together, um, it's not something we do often, but if we can do it well this time, maybe it will blaze a trail for us to do that in the future. It's a unique opportunity for us to kind of try something new. We have a lot of really talented and smart people in this town, and I think if we can start forging those partnerships now, it will then go a long way. So getting to the point, the mission of Legacy Park is to be a community space that serves the children of Jacobtown and the young at heart. Um, we're hoping to potentially partner with J Y A. Um, that is something that is really paramount here in town. They're branching out into chess clubs and they're having volleyball now, but we're hopeful that if we can work out a, um, partnership with them that they can help with the field planting. They've been doing that in Elkins Park in the past couple of years. But if we can utilize them to help with the grounds on campus at the school, that will take some of the heat off of the finances of the school, and it will mutually benefit, um, the feeder programs and the athletics at the school district. Um, the team involved in this initiative is looking forward to working with both the school and the broader community to enhance our town by creating an inclusive park where play and memories can thrive as they have for generations. Um, the reason there's a QR code on this graphic that we're showing you now is the first step that we've taken in this journey of building this new community park is we're surveying all of the stakeholders in our community. We're starting with, um, a survey that is taking your opinions into account. We don't want to do this without knowing what the community really wants. We're being very transparent. We're starting with, um, parents. We sent it out through the school district. We also had George send it out to the community at large. We're also having the students at the school take an age-appropriate survey. Um, this slide, that slide, this play structure, that play structure. They're the ones that are on it paramount. So we want to know how they are going to utilize it, what they're drawn to. Because Monday through Friday, eight to three is them. After school, it's them again. On the weekends, it's everybody. After-school hours, it's everybody as well. But the majority of the time is they can. So we really want to make sure that we're being intentional about who's using it predominantly. And then after that, so wish lists of the community that we bonus and make it on top. Um, what our plan is, is we'll collect that data. That survey will run through December thirty-one. We will be having a presentation to our steering committee, which receives our committees. Um, and then we're going to have Tom Hall. We're going to relay our findings so that the town as a, at large can, um, know that they've been heard, kind of find out whether their wish list item was, you know, going to go center or not. Um, maybe it was something that was in the majority and we can move forward with finding out if it's feasible. Or maybe it wasn't, and it was a one-off, and we heard you, but I'm sorry, you didn't get the lucky draw. Um, once we have these larger items discussed out, our budget can be determined. We're going to go in a double route where we're going to do what's the most safe option, what we can, you know, feasibly fundraise. And then we're going to shoot for the stars. We are going to be funding this predominantly through grants. We're going to be looking for large donorships. We're going to be doing business partnerships, and then we're going to be having a couple of events, um, in town to kind of see what we can garner. Really what the budget comes in at is going to determine what we can pull off. Um, we don't want to put out any hard and fast numbers of what we're anticipating the numbers to be, but you know what things cost. Um, especially you guys looking at the little bit of budget meeting that we caught at the end here. So it's a big undertaking. It's going to take the whole town. The last time that we went through this was thirty-ish years ago, and we know what it costs then. Um, and that was with everybody getting their, all those really greasy and dirty. And this time, we can't, for liability reasons, we can't have everybody doing the barn raising. So the way we're going to get our hands dirty is by fundraising. So, um, we're hoping that people will be really active on Giving Tuesday. We're also hoping that people with their employers can do, um, grant matching or donation matching. Um, we'll be having more information about that coming out. But for right now, the big ask is that we're asking that people take the survey. Um, we do have cards. If anybody wants to take one with them, these will be also posted around town in all of our lovely establishments so that when you're out getting a coffee or if you're going to get your hair done, you can take the survey while you're waiting. Um, it's available online on the borough website as well as the Jacobtown Education Fund website. Um, you can't get this right unless you have your input. So that's the biggest piece about it. We really want to make sure that we're serving the community properly by making sure we're transparent. So with your input, we're going to do this survey by, we're also making sure that we're looking really far down the line. You don't want to go ahead and place a two-million-dollar playground right where they're potentially planning to build more classrooms in five to ten years. I don't want them going, oh, Dr. Dr. Charlie Hudson, you should put this playground right where we need classrooms. I don't want that to be my legacy. Um, the reason we're naming it Legacy Jacobtown is a town that's steeped in tradition. Um, we know that everybody that lives here is really proud of that, and we want to be able to leave something behind for all of the next generation. So I appreciate your time tonight. I hope that you can support this initiative. I can hope that you can see the value in it. Um, spread the word, tell people to take the survey, and when it comes time, I hope that maybe you would help us with the donations we can set back. Yes.
You talked about, and I think this is awesome, you talked about the inclusive, uh, park.
Yes.
And that you're, uh, speaking to children.
Yes.
Are, are being inclusive with the children.
Oh, absolutely. It's, one, it's legally demanded that we're approaching it that way, and two, it's being very, um, intentional and all the play structure is laid out and, um, all.
And they can't be asked. They kind of, you just reach out to children of different abilities and to make sure that you ask.
So then the kids are maybe, it's something that the teachers are, like, intentionally doing it for? So it would be like a certain teacher and they're like, do you want them to get that? What are the little things that really is in the teaching?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just the kind of.
I just want to make sure that the teacher, that, that various teachers in, uh, in the school are having that conversation with all the children.
Oh, yes. Every student, it's being done in the classroom. So they are, whether it's being done in the one-on-one or in a classroom setting, they're, they have an opportunity to be done with any sort of, yeah, it's kind of our role in that. We're also going to be looking at the teachers.
Some of the teachers can come and meet now.
They're every day. Someone's going to, more than welcome to come on these days. It's going to be small meetings just to get therapy after what they, if they're important, not important.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And this is such a great work, and so exciting. Um, I hope that you will continue to update us as this progresses so that we can keep our images on the first.
Yeah, I hope, I think the borough of resources and communication to what us can be, we need those to leverage throughout the.
I would, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very, thank you.
Any else want to take a copy? And we can leave them in the press too, so it's a QR code.
Can we put a copy on the, the, see on the table?
So it goes through here, you know, the way that you have to be like milling. Well, like you and your husband, we both do it, and like you and a child, like you and your, I think stepmom might have already done it. It served us well. That's the whole thing. It served us very well. Uh, the first part is Arnold, A R N O L B. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll go to, uh, move on to reports. Uh, Jacobtown Fire Department report, Chief Lynch.
Uh, reports been submitted. Uh, there's a couple of agenda items that maybe I'll be able to get some updates on, and that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Stephen Lawrence, I have Rick Scott.
Yep. Uh, reports should have been sent, should be in your packets. Just to highlight, we have thirty-nine requests for EMS calls in the borough. We transported twenty-four.
Thank you. Uh, Police Department, Chief Scott.
Thank you, President Collins. Um, obviously, we had the parking meeting that occurred on November seventh. Uh, majority of that conversation about parking permits, um, we were saying, we generally just like to talk more about parking. Uh, just wanted to alert the public. We have removed all of the parking meters. Um, the guts, at least the actual housings will be removed eventually. Uh, we've placed all of the park mobile signs around the borough and the new zones that we have created. All three kiosks have been turned off. They will be removed in the future. Um, we obviously had the budget meeting this morning, before this meeting, talking about the D C E D, um, plus benefit analysis. It was presented on the thirteenth in the Sustainability Police Department. Obviously, we'll do more discussions through council. Uh, we participated in the first annual Trump retreat on Johnson Street. It seemed to be a very successful event. Uh, want to thank both of our, um, our admin assistant and our, one of our parking enforcement officers who got dressed up as Eagles cheer people, and, um, and we decorated one of our police cars for that. Um, the speed signs are still on Summit Avenue. We hope that probably will be taken down at some point soon. Uh, we'll be providing the traffic engineer with all the data that's being collected. Um, I just wanted to, um, thank two officers for attending training. Also, Tuffy trained, uh, attended the executive leadership section of the FBI trilogy, FBI LEDA trilogy. Um, he's looking forward to taking the two remaining courses that would give him the full certificate. And then also Colberth completed his advanced crisis intervention training. Uh, that brings us up to, I believe, five officers who have completed all two, both classes. Um, we also have submitted, and will be submitting reimbursement for the last portion of the P C C D grant, uh, reimbursement for all of our expenditures for body cameras, E car cameras, tasers, and related updates and software for survivors. And if you haven't seen, we have posted the crime statistics up until, including, uh, the year two thousand twenty-three. We hope to, uh, make that more of a up-to-date document that will have more quarterly postings of those statistics. And then the last thing I will tell you is that the school district has signed a contract with the Bureau to have an officer present for all home basketball games. And we will also probably have an officer present for all home football games in the future, um, based on safety and security for our large gatherings. Uh, the only other thing we'll be talking about is, uh, the no trucks or vehicular traffic. Um, that's an agenda item tonight. And then talking about the parking boards. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Body cam, yeah, the body cams. David, did you want to talk about that?
Oh, we, well, the parking enforcement officers. I'm still working on trying to figure out whether they'll be allowed to. Um, but I will make the change if we have to.
And, uh, can we talk about perhaps putting an ordinance about, you know, we, we've had people be beyond aggressive towards them, throwing, uh, tickets at them, lighting them on fire, uh, screaming at them, and, uh, you know, I, I, that's, you know, that, that's totally uncalled for. And, uh, so there, I, I have concern for their safety, frankly.
Well, I agree, and I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've asked the chief to look into that. Uh, and I think that's what he's doing.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public know that, that's, that behavior towards, towards our, towards our parking enforcement will, should, will not be tolerated, so.
Thank you. Public Works, the number, four million, ready?
Pleased, everybody. Uh, a couple things I'd like to highlight on the Public Works, it's time to town, this evening. We got Walnut Street paved, striped, all done. It's a great job. It's a two-day, well, three-day process, but everything's done. We also have done one, we are halfway done, the, the gas station, the private inner borough. Uh, it's still under recording, I know it's surgery, but the inner boroughs are, are playing cool, Summit and Highland Avenue, they're done that, they repaved everything. We have a couple of questions. I don't think I'll come back and do it, but we got four left even from Old Streets. That was a great thing. We got the C D P G, uh, A D E ramps in town. It started on Monday. That's going, uh, East Outer Hill Road. That's going on, you know. We started with the leaf road. We're about to do it some right now with a new machine, new truck, new machine. Going rate so far. And, um, we put the Christmas tree up today, and we'll start putting up the Christmas decorations right down. Call for it, I'll put, starting to be winter for preparations. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have one quick comment. You, uh, missed in our budget meeting, the library briefing about how, and the shade tree commission about how great things work. I'm supporting the movement of the shade tree commission and also, um, the library. So, thank you.
I appreciate it. I would, uh.
And Walnut looks amazing.
Walnut looks amazing.
And Snow is never going to stick to that view.
I'm not going to say that four-letter word.
I do have one other question. Um, do you know if Pendott's intention is to, or maybe it's eco, I mean, will York Road be repaved?
Yes.
Half or whole?
Uh, the lane they go, the lanes they go with, but we can't tell you so far because they haven't done their services yet. Once they do the services and see how much they damage going to serve, that's how we'll know with, uh, how much people be on one lane, two lane, or if they want to go across. If your services go across the road on more than one occasion, or in a bigger structure of road, they might be old and, but it's all about where your service is going to go at the end of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, engineers report, Mark, thank you.
Uh, good evening. Um, my list is pretty short. Um, so our, um, our enforcement file, like, take any questions on it. Um, at this time, or later. Uh, just to highlight, we've been assisting, uh, Manager Locke and Foreman Riggins uh, with the Walnut Street paving and the C D E G, uh, curb ramps project, uh, on the Walnut paving. I am curious on any feedback, good, bad, indifferent, on the new speed pillows that are out there.
I like driving between one and.
You like them? Yeah? That's good to hear. I mean, the most important thing to me is that it's slowing vehicles down and keeping them at the speed, you know, whether, whether it's jarring or not is, you know, a separate matter. So, you know, if you notice it, if you see observations, you know, over the holidays, I'm all ears.
We got a couple residents calling that said they were, I was concerned about it, but after a day of seeing the car slow down, she's, yeah. Mostly on the Walnut Lane side of Walnut Street. You see, lots of running man, like forefathers and so on. I said it was.
Really, the Washington, the, uh, like Washington Lane, they were happy?
Um, we've been continuing with our inspections on the land development projects, uh, noted. Um, we've been continuing with our inspections on the land development projects, uh, notably five oh one Washington and ninety-three York. Um, and I should mention, um, with the grocery store, uh, paving is scheduled for Washington and for York Road. Uh, they were hoping to start tomorrow, but with the weather coming in, they pushed it back to Monday. So, I'll probably Monday and Tuesday, they'll have to go through those two streets.
Grocery stores looking awesome. Sidewalks, it just looks really beautiful back there.
I love to take credit for that, but.
It looks so good.
Um, and other than that, we're just looking into it, assistant manager Locke, that's you, Mr. Blair.
President Connor. And I have one thing.
Of course.
Uh, between the engineer and Foreman Riggins, they've, they're working on a punch list on Winko where they paved for some striping and starts to go in. But additionally, there was a speed hump that was replaced on Summit. And I know a couple of residents had concerns about it. They went out and measured it, it wasn't constructed correctly. So, it's being removed, it was scheduled for Friday, but we don't know what's up with the weather yet. Uh, but they're going to remove it and reinstall it directly at the right height. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Hey, uh, move on to, uh, reports, admin and finance.
We're gonna go. Foreman Riggins, yes.
Uh, so, uh, council panel, uh, Public Works.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, um, Senator Locke, can you please, in reference, I do not have the documents.
I'm sorry?
I said, I cannot find the documents on SharePoint, so I just wondered if you could tell us again where they are or.
You go to SharePoint, you go to the Borough, and you go to Public Documents.
Okay, I don't have that.
Then you hit, uh, you don't have Public Documents?
No.
No, neither do I, so.
You should have the Borough Council, SharePoint.
See, I don't have that.
The Borough Council, but it's not.
It's in the, it's in the committee meeting folder.
Do you have the agenda? No, I don't have the agenda, I can, go ahead.
So, if we download, do, do we download the SharePoint? Well, I guess we'll hope afterwards.
We'll talk about it later. Moving ahead. Um, so, you just heard about the road paving project, Walnut Street, um, hooray for completing that, um, and making sure, and so Washington Lane paving, um, having to do with the ninety-three York, that's to come. Is that right? Maybe next week. Um, we heard about the C D B G grant and the A D A ramps, Pico gasoline replacement, um, paving repairs in Town Square. We can tell you what needs that. Are you making paving repairs in Town Square?
Oh, yes. Yes, we're meeting with a favor tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, he's gonna measure it out, he'll give us a quote. He's also looking at repairing the small area that's twenty by twenty out here in the fucking lot.
So, this is concrete repair?
No, black belt.
Okay. Um, but I see concrete repair on Harper. Um, and that has been completed?
Yes. That's the reason Republic Works and the Fire Station, we have, our yard.
And then the work is completed on the twenty eighteen D C E D grant here at the Walnut store. And, um, and in our ongoing business area, um, pedestrian accessible crossings on Washington Lane. Is there an update about those or any current?
I don't think they've activated yet. Sorry, can I ask you? I didn't really hear your question. Sorry, yeah, so with the, with the, with the new, um, new crosswalk across Washington at the grocery store, um, I, everything's, all the equipment is in, uh, the signs are up, but I don't think that Washington's activated yet.
Okay. You know, because I haven't been up there, so.
Yeah, that, that would probably follow the, um, uh, the roadway paving when they start the final crosswalk.
But Walnut Lane paving is beautiful.
Yeah. Um, and Greenwood, Washington Lane, the phase two of the Jenkington Town, the Abington connection project, looks great. Is there more to happen on our side? I know there's more happening on the Abington side.
They complete, yeah, they complete, they'll outside, they expect the roads, they're gonna, install the accessible, accessible, uh, pavement on outside of the road, expect the accessible crosswalk. So, they're pretty much finished on the outside.
On the agenda, it says set the slug mitigation and stream restoration project. Is that ongoing?
It's ongoing, but they are completely working on punch list items, what's up to be reported.
And is there any word on the new whole Vernon share, uh, bike share lanes?
There has been no progress made on that reported from, uh, Abington.
And, um, I heard that from, uh, Mr. Vickersen last month that the Noble Bridge replacement has been pushed back a year before, what do you think?
Yeah, there's no, no satisfaction last month.
And proposed line striping phase two, Earl work?
Oh, yes, we've got a couple intersections in around the road, uh, we, uh, we're collaborating with the paving, that's done on Summit and Winko, they're bringing in, they're bringing in the paving of that striking group. And once they come, right for those streets, they'll do the striking around out here, around Center Town and a couple of intersections.
It's funny because the striping on Walnut Street is so new and fresh and bright. Um, it brought to my attention that the, uh, school zone lettering on that section of Walnut, the next section of Walnut is really fading, so. Hopefully, that could be put on the list for the future.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take, we'll get it.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So, then back to, uh, I hear the finance, uh, council back.
Uh, thank you, President Collins. Um, new items for business, uh, um, the borough must be reporting, uh, manager Locke, what did that refer to exactly yesterday?
That, that is up to date now, and, uh, we're reporting through the end of October. It's completed and was provided today with the packet.
Great. Uh, the Borough Tax Collection report, um, that we're at the end of the tax year, so things are pretty much collected and, uh, we kind of know pretty much where we are. It's, uh, very unlikely that additional collections are gonna roll in any, this year, uh, that an accurate savings pattern is up.
Yeah, other than we don't really know if more will come in, we'll reconcile at the end of December and we'll know then, uh, sewer and final tax numbers.
We're close to that.
We're close to where we.
What we moved in. Um, the twenty twenty-five public budget workshop meeting schedule, uh, we concluded, uh, uh, one of the, I think the third meeting earlier today. The last, the next meeting is, uh, Monday, number twenty-fifth, at six P M to seven P M. Uh, that is just prior to council meeting. Um, at that meeting, council will consider advertisement of a final proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Um, and then in December, November eleventh, council would vote on approval of a twenty twenty-five borough budget. Uh, I think most of the elements of the budget are in place, uh, based on our reception tonight. The, uh, is to kind of summarize briefly, the, the number is that, um, we propose to, uh, transfer some millage that had been moved from the fire apparatus fund back to that fund, uh, and also transfer some millage to the general fund to the debt fund. Uh, so the upshot would be that we would move some millage around, but not raise taxes overall. That results in a hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall in the, uh, general fund budget we have to address. Um, one way we could avoid that is to not do the public transfers, uh, but that's something we need to do eventually, one or another. Um, one option is to furlough one or two police officers and the financial implications and operational implications that are being looked at. And the, uh, third option is to raise general fund millage, uh, which means we'd have to raise overall taxes to cover that shortfall. So, that's kind of the, uh, the now of where we are. And we'll continue discussing that and, and have to work through a conclusion, uh, at the next, uh, budget workshop meeting. Um, the Governor's Center for Local Government Services, last week, we had a meeting with the D C E D, uh, Police Assessment Report, and we got delivery of their report. We need to digest that and think about what its implications are. And then the borough has an opportunity to go to the Governor's Center for Local Government Services and in particular, your strategic management planning program to, uh, design and, and help fund a strategic plan for, for the future, uh, taking into account the new developments that were, you know, including how we're gonna close the budget this year, uh, to do a sort of a strategic plan to, uh, address these things going into the future. Um, the way that program works is that the borough creates a, a request for services, to get a proposal from a consultant for a study, the, uh, that Governor's Center for Local Government Service Offices, uh, approves that R F P and will fund at least half of that study and perhaps up to seventy-five percent. Uh, do I have that roughly correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, so that's something that we probably will start fleshing out at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. Uh, there are plenty of committee and commission openings in the borough for people who want to volunteer. There are services and expertise to the borough. Um, there's an opening at the Planning Commission, uh, the commission has received four letters of interest for one vacancy. There are also vacancies at the Civil Service Commission, the Rec Board, the Design Review Board, and the Shade Tree Commission. Um, so if you have a, an interest in serving, uh, to help the borough do the many things that it does, there are opportunities to, to volunteer your expertise. Um, the borough continues to update its personnel policy and procedure manual. These updates are necessary to keep up with recent federal and labor law changes. Um, I'm just going to, uh, ongoing business. Um, the borough is also updating its financial building and billing code software with Edmund's Governor Tech Park Software. I've seen that moving forward, manager Locke.
There's been no change since last month in that reporting, other than we're tightening up the numbers and we're removing the things that we don't use out of the proposal, uh, reduce the overall cost of.
So, we do have some flexibility on what we can, what we have to buy.
We have a little flexibility, yeah.
Uh, Act forty-nine of twenty twenty-four, this was a, a state program which allows, uh, uh, uniformed, uh, police officers to buy into, uh, their pension programs, uh, if they have past service, uh, the, I don't, the details, uh, could you explain the details a bit, manager Locke?
Yes, uh, the governor passed the law, we waited a couple of years for it, the governor passed the law, and each municipality has a decision to make whether they're gonna adopt it or not. And basically, the officers have the ability to use prior service towards this pension that they have with the borough. So, uh, if they worked here twenty-three years and they have two years prior service, they're able to buy those two years of the pension and get a full twenty-five years. And that's just an example, it could be six years, uh, for some people, five, maximum five, I'm sorry. Uh, we were waiting, we had brought it to council, um, I guess, a month ago, and we were waiting for the P B A to indicate that they would be interested in participating. We received that notification yesterday, I forwarded that to council. So, uh, we can move forward with the decision-making, whether the council wants to implement that or not. Once we implement it, you do have to change your pension ordinance, so there will be some legalities to it. But we did meet with the president of P B A, the chief and I did, and they are interested in participating. They put it in writing.
Okay, so the process would be, we would have a vote, next council meeting would move forward, and then make the necessary changes in our pension.
You could do it as soon as that, yeah.
Um, the, uh, continuing write-to-no requests, I think the borough is responding to those as they come in. The, uh, sewer, sanitary sewer rate study with Keystone Alliance, again, they're getting the last bits of data from, uh, Aqua and from the city of Philadelphia, uh, to give the borough insight into how to, uh, salvage sewer rate for the future. Um, the borough is also upgrading its, uh, sanitary sewer system software with Waterworks software, uh, which will allow the borough to better monitor, uh, both, both the financial side of that and also the maintenance side of, uh, our sanitary sewer system. And finally, uh, improvements are ongoing through the borough's website. I know we did some to, uh, some of the mobile, survey, uh, the website for mobile phones, uh, heard this week. Uh, that's what I have. Ready to go.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to building zoning and re-legalization council, Bernard.
Thank you. Um, potential news application to be heard before council, this coming Monday, November twenty-fifth, uh, for the four fifty-nine, four seventy-one York L L C apartment building, and they are proposing forty apartments. Uh, please review the memo, memo sent from the Chair of the Planning Commission regarding the Planning Commission's recommendation. They did, they are in support of this building project. However, they, they did make several recommendations for our consideration. So, I would ask the people, uh, it, it is somewhere in, in our, uh, list of emails, but if you have a, if you can't find it, let me know. Uh, I, I think it's very valuable information for us. Um, I was unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting last night, I don't know if anybody was on the call and wanted to say killing.
We did talk about, uh, townhouses, the desire for townhouses at the Seafree Street Garage area. And I think Maxine also talked about there was another area she thought would be nice for it. Uh, and so we also, I think that was a big part of the discussion that we talked about and, uh, and zoning requirements. But I just saw something really great and I, and I think I passed it along to you, that, uh, College, uh, Collegeville received a really big kudos from Montgomery County for having built a, uh, really nice walkable townhouse, uh, uh, community, and it was mixed commercial residential. So, I thought that was pretty interesting, that's what we were envisioning, as if they heard us last night. So, I think we should try to continue having that conversation with the owner of the property.
Yeah, if anybody didn't say it, Alex, you came, you sent an email, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it is an interesting, uh, interesting project that, that they did, I would.
Yeah. Collegeville is doing some interesting stuff, so.
The thing about, uh, the, uh, putting townhouses, it, it probably has to be some adjustments made, the, the code, some of the codes.
Yeah.
But the places for it, and it would be a, a nice addition to the borough.
Thank you.
So, it seems that conversation is alive and well.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, the Cedar Street Greenwood Avenue Properties Planning at this point, there are, there are no updates to report. Uh, Community Playground at Jenkington School District, um, the committee's working through setting up the program and obtaining documentation. The main playground is repaired and a playground inspection is being arranged through Panone. Um, the top lot swing set was found deficient and the school district has asked for the borough engineer to inspect, which I guess is being arranged, um, but hasn't been done yet.
Hasn't been done yet, correct?
Um, the private, public parking lot, uh, there, which is that, uh, which was referred to earlier tonight in the, in public comments, um, there's no update on, on that. Um, the current, uh, current development updates, there's really no updates in the ongoing, so I'm just gonna go through this really quickly to remind people, uh, what is in process. Five oh one Washington Lane, the apartment building, which is twenty-four apartments with commercial on the first floor. It looks great, if people haven't seen it, uh, drive by. Eight twenty-one Homestead Road, a proposed apartments twenty, twenty-six, uh, one and two bedroom apartments. Hopefully, occupancy will be before the end of the year, George, is that?
I think that, um, it was Earl, it was the end of December, Earl.
And, yes, he, he, can I?
Sure.
I, I met him in the market the other day and he said that probably within a month, they're gonna start to have a sign up for people to call and start to have some kind of open house soon. So, it should be moving along very quickly.
Um, ninety-three York Road, the grocery store, you can't miss it. It's, it's looking great, I think, uh, and hopefully, that'll be up and running maybe by the end of February. Fingers crossed. Uh, four fifty-nine, four seventy-one, we talked about. Six ten York Road, no updates on the coffee shop or. Six ten York Road, no updates on the coffee shop or Tiny Town or Doricopia.
That was brought up yesterday, actually, George, something about the sewer.
Yeah, at six ten York, there was an update on, well, they're working towards it, we spoke with an attorney that is actually negotiating a lease with the coffee shop. And we have been in contact with the engineers that are designing a pump station and a force main to get their sewer off the property. They had requested to go out the back onto Spring Avenue as a manhole. Abington's manhole, Abington did not want to let that sewer hook up there. So they're putting a small pumping station and putting a force main in and pumping uphill to the Dura where it will drop into our system. And then go to the running metering site. The reason Abington didn't want to do it is they don't, on their Act five thirty-seven, they don't have anywhere that sewer from Jenketown goes into their system. So they would have to change their Act five thirty-seven and it's a pretty tough process to go through, they just weren't interested in doing.
Thank you.
The borough has the, I mean, it's not going to raise the EDP.
We have the capacity for it.
Six oh four West Avenue, they're building up City Magic Conception Church, the three three bedroom apartments, any update on that, George?
They did, they are moving forward with their, their planning module, they're making progress with it. They got, I saw the county signed off. Component four A is for our Planning Commission, they announced last night that they got that, the engineer filled it out and Chairman McCandless will be signing off on that. We did our part, so they're progressing, they have Philadelphia, Philadelphia and Aqua, I believe, left. Moving forward.
And then with ongoing business, short-term rental of the property ordinance. I'd actually like to make a motion to move to full council to advertise the draft ordinance that we have in our possession, so. Any discussion? Let me just remind people to please take a look at it before Monday night's meeting. Because at that point, we can discuss it, but hopefully this has been in the works for a couple of years and we might be able to finally put it to bed before the end of the calendar year. No last few things, there are no updates on the approved plant list or the parking lot leases for Leedham Street and Town Square. Any questions?
It seems so cute, I really hope.
All in favor? Any opposed? Manager lot, please move forward to that, so. Thank you. So, okay, so.
Public safety, right?
Yes, public safety.
I, George, if we can, the IT guy again, I'm totally locked out of my, of SharePoint. It happened between like a couple of hours ago and now.
You have an agenda?
No, I got one from Jay, but like hopefully nothing weird is going on with SharePoint. Anyway, okay, sorry. The Governor's Center for Local Government Services, the D C E D report that we discussed at the meeting, I think it's kind of already been discussed in other committees. We're going to take those recommendations, but I'm really all for using all the services that they have because we need them and they're experts at what they do. For our fire department, I think Chief Lynch, do you have an update on that, on the pumper truck, do we have any feedback?
Yeah. We met last week at Fire Commission, we have had conversations with Taylor. They're in the process of reassembling the left side of the pump to begin testing some things. They're federally aware of the cap amount that was set. He's trying his best to stay within that. But as he proceeds along, things may still pop up, but he's feeling pretty confident he's going to be able to stay. This one at least, within that cap. And we're, as we're on the downhill side of this now. So he's moving along as fast as he can. Taking in all the other work that has to be done, other than just our truck, he has a lot of other things that he has to do, but he's moving along.
Okay, well, that's good. The other things that came out of the Fire Commission meeting is that the they are finalizing the bylaws that have been kind of traveling through both houses, that they've been reviewed and voted on and so that is still ongoing and hopefully will be completed soon. As well as both houses were obtaining quotes for their non, for their antique equipment, which I don't.
Non-borough owned.
Non-borough owned equipment, do you have, are there any updates from the one that you guys have?
No, their, our business meeting is occurring, so it probably would be being discussed there on the desk. I'll find out when I get there after this meeting.
Sounds good.
But as of right now, they've been received or being reviewed is the best update I give you.
Okay, that's good. And then the other thing that we discussed during the Fire Commission meeting was the fire chiefs, the outfit of the the quotes on the outfit of that, of that pickup truck, and I don't know if we have the F C done that or.
We do not have an update.
Okay, next one. Okay, that's fine. Parking management and enforcement software. We need to update our ordinance. So that way our, we have the handheld devices. So I'd like to make a motion to move the full council permission to purchase handheld devices, software for our parking management.
There's a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Manager lot, please report unanimously.
Truck, traffic, vehicle concern and concerns and ordinance list of streets. Go ahead, Chief.
So right now, you have, am I going to count up three more, fourteen? I believe it's fifteen. We have fifteen different locations, Hillside New York, Summit and Walnut, Winko and Washington, Clement and Ridle, Summit and Tams Line. Newbold and Ridle, West Summit, Runamie and West, Hillside and Walnut, Runamie and Cloverly, Shell Tina and Cloverly, Leedham and Cloverly. Newbold and Washington Lane, Runamie and Walnut Street, Nice Avenue, like Greenwood Avenue. They all have signs saying no trucks allowed except for local deliveries. The ordinance that we have specifically talks about six ton vehicle weight limit. That's in the one seventy-two, I believe, nineteen section. So what I'm proposing council needs to have a discussion about is whether you want to add to the list, right now you only have Washington Lane between York Road and Tams Line as your one street that has a vehicle weight limit restriction. That would coincide with these no trucks allowed signs. If you were to mark the streets, you would have to have declared in the ordinance the street name and then from what street to the, to the next street, kind of a beginning and an end. So based on what I, I saw recommending that you would designate Hillside Avenue between York and Florence Avenue as no trucks allowed unless we're delivering deliveries. You would probably have to add a few signs along, along the path for that. Summit Avenue between Walnut Street and Leedham Street is technically right now listed as one of those streets. Winko between Washington Lane and Summit Avenue. Clement Road between Ridle Road and Newbold. Summit Avenue between Town Supplying Road or West Avenue to Walnut Street. Newbold Road between Ridle and Washington Lane. Runamie Avenue between Cloverly and West Avenue. Shell Tina between Cloverly Lane and Walnut Street. Leedham Street between West Avenue and Cloverly. Vernon Road between Washington Lane to Ridle and then Cotman Street between Nice to West Avenue. And then Nice from Greenwood to the. That would basically what be the wording that would have to be included in the ordinance. It's up to you what, what you want to do, we'd have to obviously have Patrick take a look at this. And have them then either amend the ordinance to include these streets the way I strive them or scale back or increase the list. What that does give us is basically West Avenue and Greenwood Avenue are the main thoroughfares where truck traffic would be able to go in to town center. And you still have York Road as the main thoroughfare for most truck traffic.
Chief, so you're saying Greenwood Avenue, we're going to have a bunch of trucks going down Greenwood Avenue?
You already do have.
I know, but God knows the, I just love the Wawa truck that comes zooming down Greenwood Avenue.
And you're not going to be able to divert that, especially since they're going to the Wawa on their route. And there's really no other place for them to go.
They won't fit in the tiny streets, like those big trucks, they can't wait for all, they gotta go down York Road.
So it's for everyone to talk about, I can, I believe I posted this in the, the committee information, this list. If I haven't, I will make sure it gets all of you to discuss whether you want to impose these restrictions for truck traffic throughout the borough, just a lot of streets.
Right now, there's only one street that's enforceable.
Correct.
Yeah, but, but I'm concerned that we're going to have a lot of trucks down Greenwood Avenue.
I don't think it's going to change.
I'll hold you to.
I would think as long as it's not going to be, I guess, it doesn't sound like it's going to cause undue burden on wherever the big trucks are going. Like I think like West Avenue, like I think about the West Avenue rail, are they getting large trucks, like who's getting, just passing?
I would tell you.
Or is it our businesses that have these big trucks?
You have, you have trucks coming on to Summit Avenue between York and Leedham. Specifically, you have the mail truck that comes down Summit to Leedham Street, Leedham to West, and then right to Cedar Street. And they're back to the parking lot. All of the businesses along West Avenue are receiving deliveries from different sized trucks. Almost all of the restaurants are getting what I would call smaller tractor trailer deliveries. And they're coming on Leedham Street, they're coming on Greenwood, they're coming on West Avenue. And they're, they're hitting the other side of York Road on West Avenue, so it's.
So you're saying the trucks that are making those deliveries are below that whatever six ton threshold?
No.
No, they're the.
They're the big ones, yeah.
They are six ton or more on the side.
For what it's worth, one of the residents in North One has a concern, he's on Cotman at Nice. And his concern is that these large trucks go up on the curb and down.
I remember that, yes, I remember he was here.
Yeah, and his, and his concern is, is legit. It's a tight turn there, the trucks should not be coming off or down Cotman, Southbound Cotman from West Avenue. The businesses they're, they're delivering to are the ones that are on the south side of West Avenue, so you have all the pizza place, the Buckets, a couple other establishments there. They can make their delivery in the back parking lot, but they're turning and going down West Avenue to Cotman, which is now causing undue burden on that roadway. The other, the north businesses, which there are at least two restaurants. They pull into the parking lot and then they go out on the Cotman Street. Either turn left or right, go to Homestead or they go to West Avenue, well, some of them are continuing down Cotman Street. And they're, they're cutting that turn and going up on the sidewalk to make the turn.
Chief, we've seen that, actually. Our traffic engineer and Council Ballard, we actually saw a car jump the curb, turning Homestead onto Cotman. I was shocked, just jumped the curb.
Chief, does your recommendation include that strip?
Yes, it would be from Nice Avenue to West Avenue. And then Nice Avenue, so that they can't turn off of Greenwood on the Nice to go in the opposite direction. So that already has a sign there. This also, and Jim knows this, we would have to replace a significant amount of signs right now that are faded out, we named it, some have been knocked down, some have been removed by residents. We feel it's necessary to cover the sign for some reason, I don't know why. But if we're ready to have these restrictions, we need to have the ordinance, we cannot have these signs and and I would tell you that the same holds true for out of the pants, if they have several streets that run up against the borough. They have signs posted on all those residential streets, no truck traffic. And my guess is that they are all listed in their ordinance. You cannot enforce, you cannot enforce the ordinance, it's not good, or you can't enforce the violation unless you have it in the ordinance. And that goes out of the control of our council from the concern about Washington Avenue.
Chief, I had something to listen to. So you can't just restrict classification of vehicle arbitrarily, like if you just, if it's no trucks, you know, my pickup truck is now excluded from that as well, so. It's dimensionally, right, so light, length, weight are the typical things that would be restricted. Not just a heroic classification of vehicles. So we're, we're taking a look at that, and the Cotman, Nice Avenue example is appropriate. That's a length restriction where trucks, you know, over a certain length, a vehicle over a certain length can negotiate that turn without leaving road, right? So.
And most of, most of your, most of your six ton limit trucks are going to be the trucks that would fit into these length issues on top of it. They're, they're, they're anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four foot straight trucks, plus your tractor trailers that are somewhere in twenty-six ton range.
Again, I got to talk to you about this, I don't want every truck, I can see every, you know, tractor trailer going down Greenwood Avenue, starting you know, from the train station all the way up, and I just, I don't think that's fair to the residents along Greenwood Avenue.
Well, I think you might be exaggerating, I mean, there are trucks, but I don't think that those restrictions would cause that much traffic, buddy, because they tend to be within certain hours and they're these, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, they would put them on the wider streets that they're supposed to be on anyway. I mean, the few wide ones you have.
Which one, it's going, you know, if we take a look at the Greenwood Avenue for, is what, from the one hundred, no. What is by the train station, one hundred block?
That's the one hundred block.
Yeah, all the way up to the five hundred, I mean, they're, they're pretty big, and like I said, that, that Wawa truck in particular just zooms through Greenwood Avenue.
Well, what are our?
We could sit back and make sure that they're not zooming through Greenwood Avenue, so that's one, we have a lot of kids. You know, a lot of children, and so I want to make sure that, that that gets addressed. I mean, the gentleman, I think, who lives on Walnut, Walnut and Greenwood has expressed, you know, his dismay at the way cars just go through.
I would just, I just would bring to your attention that if you limit all of your streets to have a six ton limit, you're going to affect the businesses. And these trucks and their delivery companies will tell you they're not delivering because of the truck restrictions. So you have to have an ingress egress into the town center and you have to have the ability where it's, it's working for the delivery service and you can't, if you over restrict, you are going to impact your businesses, no event of us about it.
I, I'm not challenging that, but I don't think all the trucks that are going through Jenketown are from Jenketown. Like I said, that, that, we don't, I wish we had a Wawa in Jenketown, I mean, it would do a lot for our.
I, I mean, and I would also tell you that if someone wanted to fight the ordinance, the first thing they're going to mention is that there's two fire stations on Greenwood Avenue that exceed the six ton limit. So you're dealing with I gotta, I understand there's, there's concerns from residents, but you're going to be limiting the ability for your commerce to come into the borough and out of the borough. Some may be delivering to the borough businesses, they may be delivering to a business that's right next to the borough. It's not a good plan to restrict it because you don't like a truck driving by your house.
I, I don't mind trucks driving by, I don't, I don't like them zooming by my house and by the neighbor's house.
That's that, that's your enforcement issue. That's unfortunate, Chief.
Winko Road, Summit Avenue, safety concerns. I know that there was that woman, right?
Yes.
I don't know, we've had an update there.
I know there was, we weren't working on.
We put in.
Mark put a sketch together, we're gonna apply for a grant from the county. Just three or four locations in the borough.
... of our, she was larger vehicles and that turning radius. And finally, intersection of Hillside and Walnut, that's a place where we would really like the cars not to be parked so close to the intersection. And I wonder if we can put off signage and no painting. So it says, you know, no parking near the corner when people are parking away from the stop.
I believe that they installed on one side of the road, they left the last one second side. How about that? Also.
It's a.
The house that was refurbished with the current side is the last thing we've done. I wasn't hurt by that.
There's a, isn't it, did it say a light? Um, so the four hundred block, the yellow stripe goes back on this region, right? Well, it got four places, which is fine, but the other side, the other side where it's a hundred block, it's like. So.
It has to be able to control the line. Exactly, that's the one. It's a traffic control device and on the side by the hillside, there's a site restriction there. The cars turning, trucks turning around, if you put it sequence to the point, the cars, the object is turning around, will have the right turn, put it, car on board, order shoot, turn around, look at the other, turn around, set it where the stop sign is.
And it's also, you know, state mall, thirty feet of traffic control in place. So a stop sign is to deter traffic in the whole place. They're normally posted on the right side of the road. The left side of the road stop signs are courtesy signs, they do not impose the same thirty foot restriction. They are fifteen foot restriction for, from the curb, the end of curb, or so to say, entrance into the intersection. Is that how it's described?
Yeah.
But then the other, the four hundred block, I didn't watch too long.
Well, so in that case, in that case, there was a, you know, the turning movements that if you park in, you know, goes backwards immediately permitted, people are running or not, so that was, you know, justification for certain parking. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense too, because if you have four different places and it's longer on three of them, that seems inconsistent to me.
It's always the traveling into the vehicle, that's the problem, getting around the corner, say, this is very blocking, I hear in this room.
Also, there's signage on the four hundred block, if there's no signage on the. So the, the four hundred block.
Coming down Walnut.
Down the hill, towards the bridge, right?
And I believe this is what you're talking about here, right?
Right, and actually, when that sign is on the left, it's pretty, you know, dark, but.
That's the, that's the.
Between the yellow sign and that sign, they're too close. You know, it's a huge trap.
So on the left side, that is thirty feet from the sign, the stop sign, that's the stop sign on that side. And I believe we painted the other side fifteen feet, because that's the only allowed restriction that we put there. There's not a site restriction there. If you make sense. Whereas the opposite side, that wall is high enough that it's a site restriction, but you can't make the left.
Okay.
So that's why they had, they imposed no parking that far out.
All right, and what are the signage on the four hundred block?
Uh, there's no reason we couldn't locally assign to make sure that people see the sign, so. I've announced it a few times, they're not parking as opposed to they used to, because the yellow is there. And actually, I believe there are parking citations issued.
Yes.
So that has.
I think that's the most.
Yes.
Are there restrictions for the speed blocks, where they're coming from? Such as? We're talking about, we're gonna have, well, these trucks go to Greenwood Avenue, but it's.
Yeah, I'm happy to, you know, discuss it further, it's all valid, and that's probably all I can work as well.
Okay, we ready for Vista and Vernon Roads, the safety concerns?
Is one of the other intersections that we discussed, we're buying for the grant form, we do have a plan from the engineer to increase the density of that intersection for pedestrians and vehicle safety as well. I know you shared with me. We talked about it with residents, we talked about it with the planning commission, and then it's fine to do by the traffic, we've evolved the planning situation.
Okay, thank you, hopefully we can agree, we agree. And then the twenty twenty-five, the intersection of.
That has been, we're looking, we made it.
Okay, that's great. I guess one other quick new business thing that I, just a comment that I'll add, there's been ongoing concern, residents and some surrounding Janketown food cover during times of distribution are Tuesday evenings, Thursday afternoons, and I think maybe there's some pop up. Kind of been an ongoing concern that traffic is back up and safety concerns and blocking driveways and accidents. I volunteered at distribution last Tuesday and this Tuesday, just to kind of get an in-person understanding of what it's like last night, or a little bit of a different night, I guess, because it's Turkey, they're giving a little Thanksgiving stuff, so it was even more patrons, but still, I mean, they do see a lot of patrons every, you know, at all their service times. And it really is, I think last night really just kind of hit a fever pitch of we can no longer, I mean, we've been trying to have these talks and conversations and see what we can do, but I think we really need to talk, make some, hopefully encourage them to make some immediate changes so we can then, you know, make some, my hope is to have some immediate changes quickly so that we can then have some more in-depth discussions about helping them with logistics or how we can help them think through those things. So I talked with some board members today, and then Jay and I are gonna speak with President of the Board tomorrow, and we're gonna kind of keep, keep the conversation going in earnest, so just some of the presidents of the summit, if anyone's tuned in, we hear you, and we're gonna, we're gonna help them.
Chief, have you thought about how to, because there's no crossing roads to help, which is.
It's not the task of crossing road, and they're not trading to get in traffic control like that.
And I also, I also don't think that the borough should be responsible for funding the cost of that.
But.
That's my.
Yeah, I'm not disagree, but perhaps, you know, we could sit back and say. Crossing roads are cheaper than police, but you're saying they're not trade for them.
Well, but also, I think that, that could be a conversation that the food cover can talk about reason money for, that's something.
I agree, I mean, that would, that's, I guess what I was thinking.
I think that we're living in, they have so many volunteers.
They do?
Why can't their volunteers possibly be trained by this department?
Sure, lots of options.
I did. I did do the traffic.
And I tried.
He says no. At the station.
It might be like, but anyway, just, I mean, the main point was that we are on. Yeah, we're on it. We will follow up, so we'll let you know what comes in, this conversation adds more. And then, I don't know if there was any ongoing, yeah, you just shut the door, I don't know if there's really any ongoing.
There's two.
Oh, the Penn dot multiple municipal coordination meeting. No update. And then the traffic light upgrade to Runneet and Walnut Streets. There's a right of way, especially with protected property owners to be scheduled.
Yes, I think we're gonna start working on that in come December.
Okay.
Okay, so that wraps up the meeting, and we will return, thank you all for coming.
See you on the day.